Person for the League of Women Voters of Westford. Uh, just a brief, uh, brief plug for the L W V. We are a non Protestant partisan government grassroots organization for people of all genders, ages and backgrounds. Our goal is to encourage active and informed participation in government to increase understanding of major public policy issues. And to influence public policy through education and advocacy. And you know, part of that is hosting things like this where we can help voters understand more about what's coming up at town meeting. Um, we do not support any political candidates, uh, whether it be local or national or state. Uh, please go to our website, L W V dot westford.org to learn more. Our site also includes a series of short videos explaining the various aspects of town meeting. Uh, these videos are also available on Angela's, our town manager, our town moderators website. Um, so before we get started, I would like to thank everybody for participating tonight. Uh, our panelists and the West and thanking the Westford Cat for broadcasting this and recording this event so that we can uh, post it later for people to uh, review. Um, like I said, tonight, we have several people here to explain the various articles on our rather um, robust annual town meeting uh, on Saturday, March twenty second. Um, we are taking questions uh, vis a vis the Q and A button in Zoom. Uh, we will take questions for each article as we go along and I will do my best to keep up. Uh, and even though I just said we will take for each article as they go up, I've, I've know from experience, sometimes people aren't the swiftest typers. So it may come up while we just move on, but we'll get to it. Um, before we get to the main event of the evening, which is the um, the article review. I am going to uh, turn it over to Angela briefly to um, to give us sort of a brief primer on what to expect at town meeting. Um, it's great for those who are new or who need a refresher.
Sure. Well, thank you so much, Vicki, and thank you so much to the league for hosting this really informative event every year. Uh, it's so important that people know what to expect uh, in terms of what's coming up and what articles we're going to be discussing at town meeting. So just generally, uh, town meeting is March twenty second uh, at Westford Academy and it starts at nine AM sharp. Um, check in will actually begin at eight AM so that um, you can get there early and check in and uh, get your seat uh, in plenty of time. Uh, parking will also be at Westford Academy. Uh, should the lot at Westford Academy fill up, there will be overflow parking at Robinson and Chris fully. Um, that will be after the uh, parking at Westford Academy fills up and, and uh, the um, uh, police on duty will let people know if the lot is full and if they should go to Chris fully and Robinson. And if that happens, there'll be um, uh, bus service from uh, Chris fully and Robinson to WA. Uh, there's plenty of um, accessible parking in the front of the building uh, for those who might need it. Um, and there are other accommodations that can be made for people who need them uh, simply by contacting town hall uh, and letting them know you need some accessibility um, accommodations. Uh, there are braille clickers and uh, hearing sets always available at the meeting uh, for those who need them. And there are other accommodations that can be made as well. Um, we will have coffee for purchase in the morning from eight AM to ten AM. Uh, that's being provided by the participants in uh, the Westford Roots Program. It's a great partnership all around. Uh, and there will also be lunch for purchase uh, in the cafeteria uh, at, at the noon time break. Um, both of those are uh, preferably cash only. The, the morning is cash only. And the afternoon, if you have cash, that would be helpful as well. Um, there is free childcare and free transportation available. You can sign up for either of those things through the links that are on uh, the moderators webpage and also on the town meeting webpage. Um, the date, the last date for signup for childcare was actually uh, yesterday. But there are still some spaces available. So if you get uh, with the rec department who's providing it, go through the link. Uh, they'll, I'm sure they'll be able to find a place for you, but do it as soon as you can. Um, and same with the transportation, but the transportation is actually open until Wednesday of next week. Um, in order for them to be able to provide the staff to uh, do the transportation. There's more information about the articles themselves uh, and the process of town meeting, both on the town moderators webpage and on the town meeting webpage. And I'd just like to inform folks of a new program this year called Ask the Moderator. Um, I will be at town hall next uh, Tuesday from four PM to six PM. And the following, and the Thursday after that uh, from ten AM to noon. Uh, that's the eighteenth and the twentieth. And um, I'll be in the conference room upstairs. You can drop in, ask a question, make a suggestion. Um, or just come in to say hi and really hope people will participate in this. And I'm happy to answer anyone's questions in an informal setting and um, take any suggestions that people may have for the uh, better conduct of town meeting.
Thank you, Angela. And now to kick off the main event of the evening. Uh, I'm going to turn it over to our town manager, Kristin Lay, to kick things off.
Good evening. This is Kristin Last, the town manager with the town of Westford. Uh, thank you all for joining us on this very important meeting as a preview for town meeting, which occurs next Saturday, which Angela uh, greatly um, described. Uh, before we have uh, twenty-four articles that we'd like to go through this evening. We have a variety of department heads and other board and committee members who will lead you through the articles this evening. And we're here to take any questions. Um, if we're unable to answer the questions, we'll definitely take them down and get back to you before town meeting as we feel it's important for you to have that information. And um, we will have wifi in the gymnasium on town meeting, but we also recommend that you visit the town of Westford's webpage and download the applicable town meeting documents. We do have them in folders this year like we did last year for ease. Uh, we also would like to thank our communications consultant, Capital Strategic Solutions, as they've been doing two to three posts on our newsflash and social media for the past week and a half, and they'll continue to do that over the next week and a half. Um, highlighting the logistics of town meeting as well as highlighting the uh, facts of each article. So we think that that's a great outreach for individuals who are trying to get more involved with town meeting. And I know um, over the course of this week and next week, there's still going to be open forums for uh, the Robinson project and the Opt-In Code project. So if you do still need more information, those items are available to your disposal. So uh, Vicki, I will turn it back over to you if you want to lead us through, or if you'd like me to do that, I'm happy to do so as well.
I'll, I, I think we can, we can tag team this. So uh, on to the second article, which is um, to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-five budget supplemental appropriations and transfers. And for that, I will turn it over to our, our lovely uh, finance director, Dan O'Donnell.
Great, thank you. Uh, so the first section of this is appropriating six hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars out of free cash. And we have three uh, items that we need to fund. Uh, the first is our annual snow and ice deficit. Um, and this year we do need every dollar of that four hundred thousand dollars to uh, fill that gap that we have due to all the storms we've had. Uh, we also have nine thousand dollars going to the veteran service. Uh, we did pick up a uh, new uh, uh, client this year uh, that is receiving a max benefit. So we need this funding to get through the rest of the fiscal year. Um, and then finally, we have uh, two hundred and twenty thousand dollars for our risk management. That's actually funding our, our Medicare health insurance for our retirees. Uh, we did receive a thirteen point eight percent increase this year, and we do need this uh, supplemental funding to uh, make the May and June payments. So it, there's always sections in these. So and further, we're actually funding um, fifty-five thousand dollars from our recreation enterprise to fund our recreation uh, expenses, uh, namely the youth um, programs. Uh, one of the programs has had a lot of success this year. Um, at the speed and agility program that they run. And how that works is that we uh, collect twenty percent of the revenue. We bring in all the revenue and then we send eighty percent toward the vendor. So when we have more um, children involved and enrolled, we actually are gaining more revenue. But we do have to supplement that because we can't expend past our budget. So this is actually good news that this is happening. And lastly, the uh, the section below is uh, budget transfers. Uh, as everybody probably knows, uh, the library um, is starting construction soon. And they're moving offsite uh, in the next uh, month, I believe, next six weeks or so. And so um, what they have been doing is not backfilling all the positions that are vacant uh, in order to uh, save money for the move. Um, just operating costs, but however, in anticipation of the move, we have removed some of their net metering credits and other expenses. So uh, Ellen Rangel, the library director, did request to transfer some of these savings from the personal services over to the expenses, just to make sure that we don't run out of money uh, through the end of the year. Then lastly, we have two transfers uh, coming from the uh, the seven-ten debt service budget towards the uh, three-ten town capital project funds and the three twenty school capital project funds totaling three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. This was actually part of the budget proposal back in December to pay off uh, three projects that are coming in under budget. Uh, those projects are the uh, Plain Road Phase One uh, that we're estimating uh, about a hundred thousand dollars for the total project. And then a hundred and seventy thousand dollars for the school access controls, which uh, we've paid down over the years. It's been a long time project. Um, and then a hundred and fifteen thousand for the uh, Blanchard Roof uh, HVAC units uh, on roof, which came in way under budget. So uh, rather than actually bonding these projects and outlining years, we're recommending pay them off. And it freed up two hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in uh, debt service payments for FY twenty-six. So that was a, that was a good thing.
Great. Um, before I move on, any questions? I'm just going to flag that people can ask questions via the Q and A. Uh, in fact, I would highly advise that because I'm not going to be able to see you if you raise your hand. So um, seeing there are no questions, we'll move on to Article Three. Kristin, do you want to take that?
Yes, thank you. Um, and I apologize. I think I misunderstood your opening. So I gave an, a synopsis of town meeting rather than Article One. So Article One is a set of town reports, which is um, just a traditional article. Article Three is also a traditional article. As uh, many uh, members may know, uh, we had a perchlorate release um, on our property and we are continuing to work towards the cleanup of that with our consultant and with DEP. So this is an annual appropriation of a hundred and ten thousand dollars to fund uh, those matters associated with the perchlorate contamination and the cleanup of that.
All right, um, moving along, um, Dan, I'm going to turn it back over to Dan for Articles Four and Five.
Sure. So uh, Michael, help me out with this one. But um, so we're proposing uh, to have a energy efficiency fund, uh, to fund with two hundred thousand dollars in free cash. So Mike has been working diligently with Jeff Goodwin on a couple of um, energy efficiency projects. And so we need a hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars of this money to um, basically supplement the uh, police station attic and pipe insulation project and for the weatherage, weatherization upgrades for the Rita Miller uh, school and the Westford Academy. So we did receive um, those checks in hand. We have them in the bank. We just need town meeting authorization to approve those to actually uh, pay off the balances. So uh, Mike, if you want to give a little, little overview of those projects?
Yeah, so the, the, the Rita Miller project was a weatherization project. Uh, and like Dan said, we received a, a significant rebate, uh, but that wasn't appropriated. So we basically have to appropriate the, the check that we've received from National Grid. Um, the police station project, same uh, essential concept. It was a, I believe, a pipe insulation and weatherization project uh, and retro commissioning. Um, so again, we've received the rebate. This was just a, a mechanism for us to put that money that we've received back into the account so we can close out the project. The um, remaining uh, twenty-three thousand dollars for this uh, really is some seed money that we can use for future matches on projects that might have some match or may have a lagging rebate. Um, but it will allow us to kind of stay ahead and be able to move a little bit quicker uh, to take advantage of rebates and promotional incentives when they happen on these energy projects.
Right. Um, and are there any questions on Article Four? Actually, I do see that. Uh, I, I actually will go back to Article Three, sorry. Uh, what is the anticipated end of the perchlorate remediation and how much have we paid to date?
So I can answer um, the first question. Dan may be able to pull up the accounts. Uh, if not, we will definitely get Mr. Murray the answer. So we hope that the remediation um, is short term. However, due to testing and requirements, we can't give an exact date. Um, the consultant is confident that we are nearing in on a solution. Uh, but unfortunately, I cannot give um, an exact date of the closure.
Dan, are you able to answer the second part or?
I sure can. Um, so it's, it's been around a hundred thousand dollars a year for the, the past eight years or so, but we had to build the plants and whatnot. So the total actual spending to date um, is just over six million dollars.
Before I move on to Article Five, any questions on Article Four? I'm going back, but I'll cover that. Seeing none, Dan, I'll turn it back over to you for Article Five.
Great. So Article Five is our annual capital uh, article. Um, I'm not going to read through every project there, but if you have questions on any one, please feel free to reach out. Um, the first motion is appropriating uh, funds from free cash. It's two million, six hundred and thirty-nine thousand and change to fund sixteen projects. Uh, they, they run the range from our technology, our annual uh, computer replacements to a lot of public buildings for both the town and the school. A lot of projects there. The police are getting some teaser replacements uh, this year uh, because theirs have uh, gone out warranty. Um, there's some engineering for the uh, the two town-owned dams in there. Um, some pedestrian safety improvements for Pleasant Street and Patton Road. There's design funding. And there's uh, some two hundred and fifty thousand for a vehicle replacement for a bucket truck out there. Uh, that's a, a versatile piece of equipment that both uh, DPW and uh, this uh, public facilities can both use. And it's replacing a vehicle that's being taken off the road. Uh, one other one we have here is um, we are funding some uh, DPW trucks through Chapter Ninety Funds. Uh, however, you're not allowed to purchase no equipment uh, with those Chapter Ninety Funds. So we are uh, the four trucks that we're trying to order over the past two years. We do have to pay two hundred and five thousand dollars for the plows for those vehicles. Uh, moving on, then we have our enterprise funds. Uh, Water does have five projects out here. Uh, the, the largest being five hundred and forty-six thousand for the uh, Ford Phillips one and two pump station upgrades. And um, we have one point six million for uh, Stormwater Enterprise for two construction projects for culverts at Ree Brook and at Acton Road. And finally, the ambulance enterprise is funding a hundred and seventy thousand for three cardiac monitors. Uh, we also have three, three motions after that for our borrowings. Um, these all require two-thirds vote, so they're broken out from the rest of the capital requests. Uh, the first one is one million, three hundred and eighty-five thousand to replace our engine one rescue pumper. Um, so the, the lead time on ordering these trucks is uh, about four years at this point. Um, so we do have to get this one in line and ordered. Um, so it's, it's, it's urgent so we don't fall behind on our fleet. Uh, the next one is eight hundred thousand dollars for the uh, engineering design and construction of West Street and North Main Street. Um, pedestrian improvements as recommended by the Pedestrian Safety Committee. And finally, we have two million dollars for the community fields at Nutting Road. Um, which are at the end of their useful life and have been recommended uh, to be replaced.
Um, actually, a question came in to me via my text. Uh, with regard to that last line item, the Nutting Road Community Fields. Um, is any or some of it uh, qualifying for CPA dollars given that it's recreation?
We did not put an application for CPA. Um, replacing turf is not allowed um, to, although we beat the uh, the timeline on the first go around. The original field was funded through CPA funds. Uh, right after we did fund that, um, it became banned to use CPA funds to do that.
Um, all right. Any other questions on um, Articles Four or Five? Seeing none, uh, Article Six, there is a motion to dismiss. Do we need to um, or to uh, expand upon that at all?
Yeah, I can help with that. So um, last year, town meeting members may recall that we had asked for uh, twenty-four point five million dollars to build two PFOS treatment plants. Uh, we went out to bid and uh, at the time we went out to bid this uh, winter. We uh, saw what was happening with the market and had feared that we would be over budget. Uh, so this was a placeholder put in at the time the board closed the warrant. Uh, we're happy to report that the bids did come in under budget. Therefore, this article is no longer needed and we've requested a feed of the article.
Thank you. Um, and now moving on to Article Seven. Uh, for that, I'm going to turn this over to Valerie Young, who is the chairman of our uh, school committee. And Valerie, I believe you have some slides. I think Chris can, I think you should be able to share those.
Yep, I'm just checking for permission. There it is, permission to share. So um, I'm here tonight as chair of the Robinson School Building Committee as well. Um, and with me is Superintendent Chris Chu, Vice Chair Lindsay Richards, and Director of Facilities, Jeff Goodwin. And let's get the slides up. Oh, that's in the way. Can everybody see that?
Yep.
Okay. So um, the Robinson School Building Committee has been meeting since January or, uh, yep, since January. And I just want to do a quick thanks to all the members of that committee. Um, it's been a, a great collaboration between a residence and a, as you can see the list here, a bunch of different um, representation from different boards. And we've really lucked out with a great group and a lot of expertise from professional, professionals in the field of school construction um, and familiarity with the um, Massachusetts School Building Authority. So we just want to start right away by setting some context for what Article Seven is and isn't. Um, because feasibility study can mean a lot of things to different people. And um, so this article is asking for one point six million dollars for a feasibility study for Robinson School upgrade or replacement. Um, and that will cover an owner's project manager, architect fees, and a full analysis of two sites. We're going to go into a lot more detail of that in the next couple of slides. Um, this is a required step. The Massachusetts School Building Authority dictates nine different modules that every project has to go through. Um, and this is a requirement. Westford has a base reimbursement rate for the calendar year twenty twenty-five of forty-eight point zero five percent. So that would, will apply to the feasibility study eligibility, eligible costs. And we just want to be clear that this is not a debt exclusion or an override of um, the Prop Two and a Half. It is embedded in the um, operating budget as non-excluded debt. And this study does not directly lead or immediately lead into a um, uh, construction project. That would be a further vote. This is just the study to decide what options are available. So I'll pass it over to Dr. Chu.
Thank you. So what is an MSBA feasibility study? So again, as Valerie just mentioned, the Mass School Building Authority requires this as part of their process. And in order for us to have access to any of that reimbursement, we would have to be working with them throughout this process. It assesses the need for a school building project to see what is it that we need to do at that, at that site? It's going to include evaluating the existing conditions, exploring potential outcomes, determining the costs, and most importantly, recommending the most cost-effective and educationally appropriate preferred solution back to the community. And then that would come back to the town of Westford to decide if they wanted to continue with a project or not, based on those recommendations. So the potential outcomes, every feasibility study that the MSBA does requires that these outcomes are explored. What would happen if no changes were made? What would it look like if you were just to bring Robinson up to code? What would it look like if you renovated Robinson with possible additions? And then what would a new building look like potentially? And so those are the four major outcomes that exist within each feasibility study. Now, in our scenario specifically, because Robinson is a pre-K to two school right now, we have other things that we might explore. So that would be whether a new building would just replace Robinson as a pre-K to two school, which would leave us with still six elementary schools, three of which would be pre-K to two and three of which would be um, grades three to five, which is our current structure right now. Or the other option, which is something that the MSBA was looking at, which is another reason why they accepted us into this process, is because we had explored the possibility of consolidating two of our schools, to consolidate the Abbott and the Robinson School together, to build a slightly larger pre-K to five building, which would leave us with five elementary schools instead of six. And they would all be pre-K to five. And then another thing that came out of a space usage study that we were doing this year as well, is the idea that, that it is possible that we could explore even do a larger, that's okay, doing a larger elementary school, which would be able to consolidate Robinson, Abbott, and allow the day population to be spread out amongst the four elementary schools and leave us with four elementary schools, again, all pre-K to five. So those are the potential outcomes that would come out of this feasibility study in the first place. You can go ahead in the next slide now. So why Robinson? So in early twenty twenty-three, we conducted a facilities assessment with a design firm called S M M A. And out of that, they looked at all of our schools and they looked at the needs over the next ten years. And Robinson rose to the top as having the greatest needs. Now, the Mass, Massachusetts School Building Authority, the MSBA, you're only allowed to submit one school as a primary school. And we submitted the Robinson School because it had the greatest needs. Now, they compare that to all of the other schools in the state that are applying for these grants. And Robinson rose to the top there as well too, which is why we were invited into this process. They look at the needs across the state and the impact they would have on the local community. They acknowledge the fact that one of the things that could happen is that if we did consolidate some schools, that would have a tremendous impact on their structure in the first place. So that would look at eliminating that transition that exists right now in our current structure. As students go from grade two to grade three, they have to go to new buildings. And so that's how Robinson became the part of this conversation. Now, I'm going to pass it over to um, Jeff Goodwin, who's our Director of Facilities, to talk about um, the Abbott, the Day and the Robinson School.
Uh, thanks, Chris. Um, so uh, as Chris mentioned, we, we did this feasibility study with um, S M M A back in twenty twenty-three. Uh, part of that was a full-on conditions assessment of all of our school buildings. Um, and what we wanted to do here was we wanted to highlight some of the big-ticket capital improvements that we project are going to have to happen within the next five to ten years in both Robinson, Abbott and Day. Um, as you can see, uh, we're all, all three of these schools are showing about an upwards of about ten million dollars in, in high-level capital. Um, most of them related to roof replacements, HVAC upgrades, fire alarm systems, uh, sprinklers, uh, and power distribution. Uh, one of the things or, or two things that are common amongst all three of these schools is none of them have sprinkler systems currently. And they also offer different levels of accessibility and ADA issues. So any amount of renovation could trigger bringing these up to full code compliance from an ADA perspective and the addition of sprinkler systems. Um, and it's just also worth noting in fine print at the bottom that the numbers you see here are twenty twenty-three dollar amounts. So those are probably significantly more at this point with, with escalations of costs, so.
Lindsay?
So the one point six million um, will be used for um, several, several things um, in during the feasibility study. The first is um, hiring an owner's project manager, um, a third-party firm who will come on and onboard on the team and manage the, the study. And then if and when a future project um, happens, um, would manage this, the whole project through construction. Um, and they represent um, us in the town through the process. Then um, the largest share of the one point six is architectural fees. Um, we will be studying existing conditions at the current Robinson site as well as um, a second site that has yet to be identified. Um, looking at the, the boundaries, um, the, the topo, um, the existing conditions of the soil, doing some geotech and, and environmental analysis to really understand um, costs to build um, or, and then also looking at the existing Robinson School for the scenarios that Dr. Chu outlined. Um, in a deeper level, um, than the S M M A uh, feasibility report to really get um, a sense of, of costs for the options. Um, they will also put together a schematic report, which uh, serves as the initial phase of complete uh, school design. It lays out a program and how it fits into the existing building and addition, potential additions or a brand-new school building. And that schematic report serves as the starting point for the future define, design phases for um, a new school. Next slide. So this is a deeper dive. So this is a deeper dive in the 1.6 and how the committee set the, the budget for the 1.6. All of these line items for two different sites to study are estimates. There are no current contracts, but they are, there's also a contingency. And any unused funds can be rolled into a potential project or just unused. We looked at, based on the experience of the committee, myself included, and we looked at what the existing Robinson Site would require for a deep study into existing conditions and a schematic report. And then also matched that for a second to be identified site. This work will take place over about nine to 12 months if approved by the town, the meeting on the 22nd. And we also looked at similar-sized projects for, in other districts across the state to see what their feasibility study amounts were to just make sure that the value that we set was appropriate for a study of this size. And as Valerie noted, the current reimbursement rate for MSBA for the town of Westford is 48%. So that's roughly $800,000 worth of eligible costs that would be reimbursed as we spend the money if the feasibility study is approved.
Thanks, Lindsay. So we just want to, again, reiterate what this study, what a yes vote means and what a yes, a no vote would mean. So a yes vote obviously authorizes the full amount, but as Lindsay has explained, the reimbursement process would, would kick in. The next step would be hiring an owner's project manager. It does walk through all of those possible solutions that Dr. Chu explained. Any future project renovation, construction, repairs would be come through a future town meeting. And a yes vote does open up the door to explore that possibility of consolidation. A no vote, no study would be done with no MSBA grant. If we wanted to restart the MSBA process, we would start back at square one with no guarantee of acceptance. And other districts have, had, have submitted projects for multiple years before being accepted, up to 10 years. So it, there's no guarantee of acceptance. They look at district readiness as one of the key factors. And so a, a negative vote would count against us in that aspect. Robinson obviously would be continued to be used as is. And any repairs would be without the grant support. So they would be the full burden of the town of Westford to, to fund that. And the slide that Jeff Goodwin explained showed some of those repairs. So that's the, we do have a website up on the school district. There's a video tour, there's frequently asked questions. We actually have, the building will be open for walkthrough drop-in tours with members of the committee this Saturday, March 15th, from 10:30 to 1:00 p.m. So please pop in and see us if it's been a while since you've been in the building and you want to learn more. And we look forward to your questions.
Thank you, team. I don't see any questions in the chat right now, but oh, we got our first one. Does this article require a 2/3 vote? If so, why? Also, what is the recommendation votes of the various boards?
So this article does require a 2/3 vote because it does require bonding. It does not require a vote of, at the town elections because it is not a debt exclusion or that requires borrowing outside of the levy limit. And the recommendations on this article are... School committee was unanimous, 7 to 0. And I believe
Right in front of me.
Select board was 5 to 0 unanimous. Finance committee was 9 to 0 unanimous. And capital planning committee was 8 to 0 unanimous recommending.
Any other questions on Article VII? From our attendees? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to Article VIII, but I don't see any, oh, there's Marilyn. My screen didn't have everybody on there, so. Oh, wait, actually, before we get to Marilyn, sorry, Marilyn. Okay. Just came through. Could the other schools be consolidated and the Robinson not used at all?
Do you want to take that, Dr. Chu?
Sure. So at, at present, our, our current structure and the current situations that we have at the building, we would not be able to consult, we would not be able to take Robinson out of commission and move those students to the other buildings. The consolidation process would require us being able to look at additional resources, right? So that's when the new building comes into play. And if we were to consider consolidation, the upgrades that would need to be done at both Abbott and Day School as well, too, are, are things that we'd have to consider. But when we, that was a part of the space usage study that we did this year, where we looked at that, we looked at how the buildings are being used right now and would it be possible for us to close one of the schools right now? And, and all of that data, we can share with that, that's, we, we have that on our website as well, too. But that was something we explored and we, we're not able to do that just on its own. So it's more about what work can be done at Robinson, whether it's renovations, whether it's an addition or whether it's a new building in order to meet the needs that would, that would, that in itself would support all of the district.
Thank you. Any other questions on this article, Article VII? Okay, seeing none. Now I'm going to turn it over to Marilyn to Article VIII on the CPC recommendations.
Okay, yep, to forgive me, I'm not too great with the computer here on this so that I don't have my picture there. I don't know if it comes from me or you, but I'm not playing with it for fear I'll lose my place in line. I wanted to talk for a few minutes about community preservation. I wanted to remind everybody that there are three areas that we are allowed to spend money in. One is community housing. The other one is historic preservation. And the third one is open space, which can include outdoor recreation. What we are asking for is authorization to approve recommendations to include $341,746 for community housing reserve, $350,000 for the Forge VFW Softball Field Lighting Improvement Project, $350,000 for the Westford Academy Trustee Field Lighting Improvement Project, $890,000 for future open space land purchases. And I just want to make a comment on that. Most years, the Conservation Commission requests a CPA appropriation of $190,000 to bank to assist with the acquisition of land and the related costs of legal surveying and appraising. These regular appropriations are vital to quickly act on available properties outside of the regular town meeting and the special town meeting cycle. Currently, two tracts of undeveloped land have been offered to the commission for purchase. The first tract is approximately 15 acres, and the commission has sufficient previously appropriated CPA funds that they had banked to acquire this land. In order to acquire the second larger tract of approximately 40 acres, the balance of the previous CPA appropriations and this request of $890,000 would be needed. This tract of land connects two undeveloped parcels, one currently under the care and custody of the commission, and an established trail networks. And it further protects a certified vernal pool and wetlands resource areas and areas significant for biodiversity. These tracts of lands were identified in the current open space and recreation plan and further the town's strategic plan, strategic outcome area of preserving open space. Excuse me, just a second. I want to see where I left off, I'm sorry. $50,000 also for Westford Rental Assistance Program and $50,000 for a multifamily detailed needs assessment. $15,600 for the Meadowbrook Farm Food Insecurity and Sustainability Project for a multifamily, I'm sorry, Sustainability Project for electrical plumbing and insulation work to the food storage shed. I hope that was kind of clear. And that's our presentation.
Thank you, Marilyn, we have a question.
Go ahead.
Why wasn't the community housing allocation moved into the Affordable Housing Trust Fund? So funds can be used to purchase affordable units if the opportunity arises, possibly before our next town meeting?
It would have to have been presented that way. The way that we issued the money was because of the way the requests were asked of us.
Thank you. Any other questions on Article VIII? Seeing none, I'm going to move on to Article IX, which I'm going to turn back over to Dan.
All right, so this one's on the consent agenda. It's our annual article to set the FY26 expenditure limits for each of our revolving funds. And how these work is basically, you know, money goes into the, the fund through a decade revenue stream and they can be expended on related expenses. So there's only one change from last year. That's the senior center programs, the expenditure limit increased by $15,000 going from $50,000 to $65,000.
Any questions from our attendees? Alrighty then, moving along to Article 10, which is the approved fiscal year 2026 operating budget. And I believe we're starting with Kristin on that one.
Thank you. So this year, our fiscal '26 operating budget is a balanced budget. We are not asking for an override from the community as we did last year. This is to seek to raise and appropriate $137,649,144. And those funds will come from a variety of sources as listed in the motions booklet. I will be giving a full state of the town report in advance of this article at town meeting. I will not be doing that this evening, but if you'd like some more information related to the budget, I presented my initial budget to the select board on December 10th. That material, those materials are available online. And then we had a series of four public hearings with the finance committee throughout the month of January. There were several tweaks made to that. We did receive the governor's initial budget at that point in time, which then provided us with the numbers that we have before us this evening. Dan, would you like to add anything to that?
I think you covered it. Everything's on the website under the Article 10 folder. So if you have any questions related to the budget, please reach out to Kristin and I will be happy to, to respond to them.
I see no questions in our Q and A. So I'm going to move on to the next two articles, Articles 11 and 12. And I'm going to turn that over to Dan to address both of those.
Great, so these are also both on the consent agenda. For Article 11, it's authorizing the use of the Chapter 90 money from the state. That's to repair roads and other eligible uses. We have good news on this one. The governor, after years of funding the budget at $200 million, has bumped that up to $300 million. So that means about a $500,000 increase for Westford, going from $890,000 to $1,389,000. So it's a, that's a big increase for us in that line item. For Article 12, the Water OPEB, this is my favorite article every year. The Water OPEB Stabilization Fund, which is other post-employment benefits for retirees, which is basically health insurance. Their OPEB fund is fully funded, so we use this as a model for how the fund should work. So the $25,822 is being allocated out of the Water OPEB account to pay for the FY26 water employee retirees' health insurance.
Excellent. And any questions on those two articles? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Article 13. And for that, I will turn the floor over to Will Nazar. Correct me if I said that wrong.
Yep. Nazer.
Nazer, okay. And that is with regard to the veteran's tax exemption.
Yes, so this is a pretty simple article in terms of what we're trying to do. We already have many veterans exemptions. And this veteran exemption, it just, it increases the exemption amount, dollar amount by the cost of living increase that the state determines every year. So that way, these veterans exemptions will go up each year by that cost of living. So that's kind of the entire article in a nutshell.
Okay, any questions? Alrighty, moving along then, we're, we're cooking with gas now. For Articles 14 and 15, we'll turn this over to Kristin to discuss our 300th Anniversary Celebration Fund and Article 15, our easements.
Great, so Article 14 speaks to that the town of Westford will be celebrating our 300th anniversary in 2029. It has been traditional for municipalities who are looking to celebrate, you know, the 200th, 250th, 300th anniversaries to create a fund in which those resident, either residents or business owners or other donors could donate money into a fund to then be used for parades, fireworks, banners, events that the town would put on. So we see that if the town meeting does vote to establish this fund, we would then ask the select board to establish a 300th Anniversary Committee in which they would then move to potentially have a charge to plan those certain events and fundraising opportunities. This would not be raising taxes in any way. It would purely be off of donations or proceeds from, you know, memorabilia, hats, t-shirts, other things. And then any funds that are not used would be returned to the general fund after the celebration is complete and the accounting has been finalized.
Any questions from attendees on this article? Okay, seeing none. Like I said, we can always come back if somebody is still typing. We'll move on to Article 15, the easements.
So Article 15 is a traditional article in which allows the select board to accept easements throughout the year if they come available for sidewalks, drainage, utilities, trails, and the like. So that gives full blanket authorization for the select board to do so. You'll see Articles 16, 17, and 18 are requesting easements for specific matters.
Great, and what a nice transition because now we're going to turn it over to Jeremy Downs to discuss those three articles.
Thank you. So Article 16 is for the Stony Brook Bridge easements. This article will authorize the select board to acquire right-of-way and private property rights necessary to support Mass DOT Stony Brook Bridge Rehabilitation Project. The existing bridge is a 150-year-old stone arch bridge that has some safety and structural deficiencies. And the main objectives of the project are to increase traffic safety, increase, increase load carrying capacity, and extend the useful life of the bridge for many years to come, all while maintaining and preserving the existing stone arches and historical aesthetics of the bridge. So this article is just in support of Mass DOT's construction project. And it should be noted, Mass DOT is funding both design and construction. The town's only obligation is to acquire the easements.
And any questions on Article 16? Okay, we'll move on to Article 17, which is easements on West Street.
That's correct. So thi- this is an article to authorize the select board to acquire the necessary easements to support the West Street and North Main Street pedestrian safety project that was included under the capital appropriation under Article 5.
And finally, the easements on Acton Road Culvert Project for the Reed Brook Culvert.
So again, this is another article to support the easements that we need to acquire for the Acton Road and Reed Brook Culverts that were also under the capital appropriation, Article 5.
And I'm not seeing any questions, which is a, you know, can keep moving on then. We're going to go into our next section, which is bylaws. And for Article 19, I'm going to turn it over to Jeff Morissette, which is...
So we are giving Jeff the night off and Joe Jenna with... So we are giving Jeff the night off, and Joe Jenna Witz will explain the article for you, Town Planner.
Alright.
Good evening. Uh, Article nineteen pertains to an update to Section eight point two of the town zoning bylaw. That's specifically the floodplain overlay district. Uh, much like the update to the bylaw last year's annual town meeting, this update is also an administrative change. As FEMA has updated their flood insurance rate maps and flood insurance study reports. Uh, FEMA routinely performs updates like this, so better surveying and mapping data becomes available over time. Proposed amendments simply consist of referencing the latest effective date of FEMA's maps and insurance study, which will be July eighth, twenty twenty-five. Uh, removing superfluous references to flood zone types that are not in Westford, uh and adding definitions from FEMA's standard glossary term to define the relevant flood zone types that are present in Westford. Um, the amendments were reviewed by the State Department of Conservation and Recreation and are deemed to be deemed to be in compliance with the National Flood Insurance Program standards as currently proposed. And just for information purposes, keeping our floodplain bylaw consistent with FEMA's latest maps and insurance study reports allows Westford to continue to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program, uh which allows residents of our community to continue to have the ability to obtain federal flood insurance and ensure that property owners and mapped floods ha- flood hazard areas are eligible for most forms of disaster relief funds. Um, both the planning board and select board have recommended approval of this article, and so we ask that you support this article as well at town meeting.
We do have one question, and that is, can you give us some information about how vulnerable Westford's floodplains are?
That's right. Entirely uh understand the question, um but um, this all relates to the one percent hazard flood area, or some people refer to it as the hundred-year floodplain. Um, so there are marginal changes uh throughout town, um basically around the Merrimack River watershed. Um, so Westford actually has two different watersheds that go through it. Um, so these changes pertain to the Merrimack River watershed, not the Suasco. Um, be happy to review any specific changes that you might be interested in. Um, I'm not sure what exactly the nature of the question is.
A follow-up? Um, okay, so give it a second, see if anybody else has any questions on this article. And we can always come back if there's questions pop up. Um, but moving on to Article twenty, uh which is the Adopt the Specialized Energy Code, and I believe for that, I'm not sure.
I will be doing the presentation.
Ah, okay, that's why, that's why your name's on my list, okay.
Sorry about that.
Alright. And I believe you said, um, you have slides?
Yes, so I'm clicking the um.
Beth, let me give you permission to share one moment, please. Alright, you should now have permission to share.
Hi, can everyone see the slides?
Yes.
Yes.
Hello, and thank you to the League of Women voters for organizing this evening and giving us an opportunity to present. My name is Beth Perkins. I'm a member of the Clean Energy and Sustainability Committee. I'm here with Tom Teller and uh Mike Berlinsky might be in the audience, our, our committee chair. We are here to talk tonight about the Spenn- Specialized Energy Code, which we're going to be looking to adopt at the annual town meeting. Um, Westford has a strong commitment to clean energy and sustainability. Um, many of you might remember um the climate resolution that was passed overwhelmingly in October twenty twenty at our town meeting, and was followed um quickly by uh our climate roadmap that was published by Clean Energy and Sustainability in twenty twenty-one, and then endorsed by our select board in twenty twenty-three. Implementation of that roadmap is one of our town managers' objectives, and commitment to envi- environmental sustainability and climate action is one of the areas, outcome areas of the recently adopted strategic plan. So why should we adopt um the Specialized Energy Code here in Westford? Well, it is a, a key step on our climate roadmap. Buildings are our largest source of emissions here in Westford at fifty-eight percent. And the building code is the primary way that we impact new buildings, which are very critical because buildings that are constructed today could be here for fifty years, even a hundred years from now, so we want to make sure they're built as efficiently as possible. Um, the code requires the super-efficient passive house standard for large multifamily developments, which is um a possible mitigation of the uh national grid uh spot capacity issues that we have. And we'll talk about m- more about that in a, later on in the presentation. Very important, only impacts new buildings. So most of us in this room, most of us town at town meeting aren't going to be directly affected by, by this code, um because it does only impact new buildings. However, it does position Westford for a significant increase in grant funding. And it does not impact any current municipal projects, uh including the J V Fletcher Library Project. So um here in Massachusetts, we have three um energy codes. We have the base code, a minority of towns in Massachusetts um have the base code. We have the stretch code in the middle, which is the code that is currently in force here in Westford and all other green communities. So two hundred and fifty uh towns have the stretch code installed. And then we have the specialized code, which we're talking about tonight, which i- it includes this, uh excuse me, the specialized code which we're talking about tonight, which includes the stretch code plus some additions. And those additions are only for new construction. Um, forty-eight communities representing about thirty percent of the state's population have adopted the Specialized Energy Code, and it includes our neighbors, our neighboring towns of Acton, Chelmsford and Carlisle. But if you look at the map, and I know it's, uh you know, it's hard to read, but um towns very of, yeah, out west than a fairly rural towns have, haven't um adopted it, as well as the city of Boston and Cambridge and more urban towns. But importantly, our neighboring towns have already adopted this code. Uh, what does it require? So the require, the requirement for um single-family, commercial and municipal is number one, it's only new, so renovations in additions have no requirements. New all-electric homes and conver- commercial buildings have no requirement. But if you were going to build a new building and you're going to use fossil fuels, these are buildings that will be here for fifty-plus years. Um, if you're going to use fossil fuels for heating, cooking, hot water, clothes drying, that is allowed. That is not restricted by the, well, it is not disallowed by the code, but they must be pre-wired for future electrification. So what that means is if you want to put in a gas stove, let's say, you would have to provide a plug and circuitry to that plug during the construction phase, so that later on, we don't have to open up the wall to um electrify either our, our heating system or our cooking system. Um, also, homes, smaller homes, less than four thousand square feet, must include rooftop bit panels, and homes four thousand square feet or larger must offset the uh fossil fuel use with onsite solar. Um, so for new, large, multifamily must meet what I spoke about earlier, this highly efficient passive house uh building standard. So what is passive house? It's a building design standard focused on high performance that dramatically cuts energy uses. It uses a super-tight, airtight construction, super-insulation, efficient ventilation, high-performance windows. Um, any building can be built to the passive house standard, includes it, including high-rise. When you hear the term passive house, some people assume it's a house. It can be a building of any size. Heating loads can be reduced by ninety percent or more, and overall energy demand reduced by sixty percent or more. It provides a significant improvement in indoor air quality and occupant comfort. Um, and the buildings can actually maintain comfort for seven day, several days without power, even in extreme weather conditions. So it's been fascinating to me to learn more about this code of, I um it really um is taking off for multifamily buildings. And this is just a picture, pictures of some of the buildings in our area that are being built with the passive house standard. Twenty thousand plus units have pursued passive house through Mass Save. How much does this cost? Now, we're talking about the whole specialized code, not just passive house, but there is no cost to the town for um the adoption of the Specialized Energy Code. Um, so, so we'll talk about increased construction costs for residential, and all of these um numbers uh come from the Massachusetts Department of Energy Resources. Less than two percent increased construction cost for new mixed fuel. Um, and that is for the solar we just talked about in that pre-wiring. What also needs to be considered with that is that there are uh incentives, also energy savings. So of course, you know, as we all know, solar energy comes with uh energy savings. Um, and the solar could be leased, so if the person building the house wanted, didn't want to pay upfront for that solar, they could do a leased arrangement. Multifamily construction costs, this is the passive house. Uh, one to four percent increase estimated in construction costs, um and generous incentives available through Mass Save in as you know, I just spoke about with all of the uh great insulation and ventilation, um significant operating cost savings, which is particularly important for a multifamily affordable housing. What about the grid? Um, so there have been recent concerns about the capacity of the grid here in Westford, um and it, there have been issues in our MBTA overlay district because of the uh proposed large multifamily residential projects that are being um submitted in that district. All on the same, or the two that have been submitted were on the same circuit. So what I'd like to, is so if we are to um implement uh this specialized energy code, those um apartment buildings basically would need to comply with the passive house requirement. If they were, um if their building permits were submitted after the date that this will be implemented, which is July first of twenty twenty-six, is what is the date, um. But what I think is very important to understand is that the key to the Specialized Energy Code is demand reduction. It isn't all-electric. The uh Specialized Energy Code does not demand all-electric. Um, and neither does the passive house building standard. You can build passive house all that great insulation with, with um, with a gas heating system. You don't have to go all-electric, and you still get those significant uh decreases in energy bills and in the load on the grid. Um, so I, I'm including a quote here from Lisa White from the Passive House Institute. Um, passive house buildings can dramatically reduce the peak building load, specifically the heating load, often by a factor of two to three compared to other code-compliant counterparts. So this is kind of a summation of the reasons we're advocating for a yes vote on Article twenty. The, it only applies to new buildings. It advances Westford's commitment to clean energy, sustainability, uh increasing energy efficiency, providing consumer protection, that pre-wiring that needs to get done, so that if you purchase the house, you can easily move things over to um electric, if you want. It's grid-friendly, and adoption of the code will position Westford for substantial grant funding. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. We have a few questions on this.
Yep.
Um, the first is, why, why would we, why are we being asked to approve this now and not next year closer to the effective date of July first, twenty twenty-six?
Well, the recommendation, well, I, in fact, I think it's a rule from the Department of Energy is that we need to wait six months, at a minimum, six months after adoption to uh, at town meeting, to do it. So the earliest we could have done it was January first. Um, we believed that it was good to provide the town with more time for planning purposes, and so we came up with the date of July first, twenty twenty-six. But it's got to be, you know, you need to factor in that six months.
Is it true that any changes to the code at the state level would automatically be effective, effective in Westford?
Well, this is just back to the basics of building codes. I think um everybody understands that our building codes here in town, all building codes are updated on a regular basis because of technology changes, because this feedback often from builders who, something is working or something isn't working. Our building codes throughout the state, throughout the country are updated on a regular basis, ev- roughly every three years because of um the changes I just described. And so our current code, the Stretch Energy Code, Westford is required when a new um implementation of the Stretch Code comes out, Westford is required to implement it, as are all other towns uh required to update a building code when that code changes. It can be a good thing. In fact, the most recent update to our Stretch Code actually lowered some of the standards to make it more workable. So, believe it or not, they listen, and in many cases will adapt, or will modify the code so that it's more workable based on information that has come from the cities and towns.
And lastly, um are you able to calculate the impact of the increased home purchase price under this bylaw on our affordable housing objectives?
Well, I, you know, we went, we went over the costs, which are, so affordable housing, I'm assuming you mean multifamily affordable housing, um so that the estimates for increases, and these are increases, these are estimates from here in Massachusetts. We also received estimates from Pennsylvania, where they've been using the passive house standard much longer. They have parity, the costs, construction cost, um estimates for passive house in Pennsylvania versus standard construction have hit parity. But here in Massachusetts, where it's newer, we, we're looking at uh one to four percent for the recent projects that were studied by D O E R. Um, and for, especially for And for especially for affordable housing, there are big incentives out there to help to help people be able to use this standard because it is perfect for multifamily housing, affordable housing because of the low operating costs, because of the low heating and cooling costs.
Are there any more questions on Article twenty before we move on? Okay, not seen any. If you want to stop share, Beth, that would be great. We can move on.
Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you. Finally, moving on to Article twenty-one. Again, I'm going to turn that over to Kristen. This is fines for violations of the dog control bylaw.
Thank you very much. So in our general bylaw, we have locations there that talk about fines related to dogs that are acting out of nuisance and are not acting in accordance with our bylaw. The fees currently are very low and not compliant with mass general law. So we're asking town meeting to update our bylaw to bring those fines in compliance with mass general law, which in turn brings up those fines substantially. The first offense from ten dollars to fifty dollars, the second offense from twenty-five dollars to a hundred dollars. The third offense from fifty dollars to three hundred dollars, and the fourth and subsequent offenses to five hundred dollars, which was originally a hundred dollars.
Does nuisance include off-leash dogs, even if the pup seems to be behaving?
I think that's dependent on where the location is and who observes it and what the issue is. We can ask that question of our animal control officer.
Any other questions on this article? Seeing none, we're moving on to Article twenty-two. And for that, we're going to turn it back over to Jeremy Downs. This is the resolution to accept Boston Road as a public way.
Thank you. So Mass DOT is requesting a show of support through this non-binding resolution that the town would be willing to support the acceptance at a future town meeting of the section of Boston Road between Crown Road and Blakesville Road that is currently owned and maintained by Mass DOT. A formal binding vote for acceptance will be made at a future town meeting once the Boston Road reconstruction project is completed.
Alright, any question? Oh, we do have a question. On cons? That's not really a question. The person who wrote this, could you, could you rephrase? Because I'm not understanding what you're trying to ask here.
I think I can help. I know there's been some incidents of dogs off-leash on conservation property. If the town of Westford's animal control officer or police officer or other agent of the town does not observe it, we cannot enforce it.
Alright, thank you. And then, so going back to the article we were discussing, question is, what happens if we don't accept these resolutions?
I can help answer that. So we were approached by Mass DOT that they actually wanted us to accept Boston Road this year in order to begin construction. And we pushed back against that and said we do not want to accept the roadway when there is construction going on and we don't know the condition of that construction at the end. We don't want to be responsible for that. So I do believe that if we do not accept this resolution, we would be running into a bit of trouble with Mass DOT based upon the project and they may stop construction, which I don't think anyone wants at this point in time. So town council has reviewed this and does recommend the resolution and then coming back once the roadway is completed for the acceptance.
Are there any more questions? Alright, moving on to, Jeremy, it's back at you, Article twenty-three.
So acceptance of Diane Lane is a public way. So Diane Lane is a residential subdivision that was permitted through the planning board a couple of years ago. Construction was fully complete last fall. Final paving was performed. The paving has gone through winter. So the developer at this point is requesting that town meeting accept Diane Lane as a public way. And they've completed everything in accordance with their decisions and approvals. So we are supportive of this request.
Seeing no questions. I'm now going to, we're hitting the homestretch here, the last article of the of the day. Which is a citizen's petition to amend the general bylaws to change the date and the time of the of annual elections. And for that, I'm going to turn this over to Valerie, who I'm going to say for the record is speaking as a private citizen, not as her role on school committee, Robinson Board Committee, etc.
That's right, Vicki. Thanks. The motivation was definitely from my work on the school committee because when we set the calendar each year, we review which days the schools will be closed for cultural, religious holidays and elections. And as everyone knows, voting takes place at Stony Brook Middle School and Westford Academy. But all nine schools are closed and our staff engage in a full day of professional development. However, having that in May is not optimal as it's in isolation and near the end of the school year. So I submitted this proposal to move the town election to a Saturday, like many other towns do. However, following the select board's unanimous vote not to recommend, I've decided to withdraw the petition. The select board indicated that they want to explore alternative solutions and I want to give that process the opportunity to succeed.
Okay, then. And with that, we comes to the end of the presentations for tonight. I would like to thank all of the town officials, committee members, volunteers for all their support and attending tonight. I'd like to thank the attendees for attending tonight because, you know, educated populace helps make good decisions. And thank you to the Westford cat for recording this. And we look forward to seeing you on Saturday, March twenty-second at Westford Academy at nine AM sharp or get there. Get there early. Get there by, you know, before nine. Get your parking. Get yourself checked in. So thank you all again and good night.